All right, go ahead. Set the green light? Yeah, all right, welcome everyone to the City of South Pasadena Public Works Commission Regular Meeting. This Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty. In the city council chambers, we begin with the South Pasadena Commission Statement of Civility. As your appointed governing board, we will treat each other, members of the public and city employees with patience, civility and courtesy. As a model of the same behavior, we wish to reflect in South Pasadena for the conduct of all city business and community participation. Decisions made today will be for the benefit of the South Pasadena community and not for personal to gain. Gain a quick notice on public participation and accessibility. Public comment and participation may be made in person here in the chambers via Zoom with the web ID. Provided there also via written public comment and submit an email and via phone with the details provided. And let's see, it looks like a roll call is next.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Sorry. Okay, Vice Chair Ryan Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Omari Ferguson. Commissioner David Mally. We have city council liaison. Mayor Brothim Evelyn Snyder, mayor. Evelyn Snyder. And Director Ted Gerbert and Deputy Director Antana Tessa Faye and.
Principal Engineer Michael.
Is also present and myself, Raina Salazar, Martin Analyst for Public Works.
Great, in that case, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. America, the Republic, the United States. All right. So for a public comment, we received one public comment via email, which is available, I believe, on the website. It's been distributed for discussion. And there is no in-person comments, we'll move on to the presentations.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jones. So tonight, we're going to return to a topic that we touched on in September. The city's street improvement program projects. And so some of these slides will look a little bit familiar from September, we're gonna move to the next step here and expand on them. And we'll also be bringing this item back probably in a few months to show you the other progress that we've made. So let me jump to the first slide there, Raina, do you want me to click or are you gonna click? Okay, perfect. So we talked about this generally in September, but we wanna break this down for you a little bit more. The city is taking on four street improvement projects. This was discussed during our State of Streets meeting last year with the city councils, a joint meeting. I'll describe the four projects for you, there's project one, which is actually in construction right now. So this is the west end of Monterey Road to the west city limits. On Alta Vista also from Indiana to Oak Crest Sterling east of Grand, that's the cul-de-sac near the one-ten freeway entrance. And then Forest just north of Mission. So there's three other projects that are under development. Since project one is a reconstruction project, we're actually redoing concrete work or grinding out asphalt and repaving it. Project two will be very similar. We've listed the streets there that project two entails and we'll get into a moment as to why those are the streets that are in the list. But project two is also a reconstruction project. The difference in project two, and also this will come up on the next slide, is that we're trying to take on more of the utility improvements that are necessary. We've talked about that in September and that's part of our strategy is looking at the water and sewer massive needs. Infrastructure needs that we need to start to take on of these projects. Project three, oh, sorry, Raina. Project three is still in development and we'll talk about that a little bit tonight, we have not selected the streets for project three. Because that is primarily a maintenance project, so the idea there is that these are faster and much less expensive surface treatments. On streets that are in a decent enough condition to accept the treatment. And the key here is strategically picking those locations in the city. For streets that, like I said, are not decayed to the point of needing reconstruction. Are not new, but are somewhere in between so that we can keep those streets, the condition of those streets up for the years to come by paying attention. Just like you do preventative maintenance on your car or your house. And project four is also in design. This was, this previously was coupled with project two. But this is a complete redesign and reconfiguration of the Mission Street Pasadena Avenue and Arroyo Drive Intersections. Those two intersections that are kinda on the entrance to the golf course down Stony Drive there. And the reason we split that out is because that's kind of a complicated project, we wanna reconfigure that intersection to provide additional pedestrian pathways. Bike lanes and really square off the intersections, as you know, and you've traveled through those previously. The stop sign there gets knocked down quite often, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a confusing intersection for drivers. Let's jump to the next slide here. So these are some pictures from as recent as today and last week, this is what's going on in the city right now. So on the left, we have Forest Drive, we started our grind today and tomorrow we'll be paving. On the right, you see Monterey Road, this was some of the concrete work that was underway last week. And so we expect to finish the, the majority of this work by if not the end of next week, the middle of the following week. Most, all the grinding and paving work will be done, there are still some sidewalk panels to be implemented. And then we do have additional ancillary work like replacing street headlamps to be. LED, newer LED streetlights, fixing traffic loops that work at the signal at Monterey and Pasadena. And that'll take some months for us to complete that work because there's a longer lead time for it, but the majority will be done this month, which is very exciting. Let's jump to the next slide. Thanks, Raina. And so this, this will look familiar to you, we talked about this in September and really what we're looking at this list, this map is projects one, two and four. So the green ones that are currently underway, that will be done this month. Projects, project two, the list of from project two. Which is the design package we're currently developing and we're adding in water improvements and sewer improvements. And then also that small section at project four there, you can see an orange Mission Pasadena Arroyo. Now, we haven't shown project three surface treatment on this and we hadn't showed it to you in September and that's what we're gonna talk about next. Just to touch on quickly, why projects one, two and four were previously selected. This should look familiar to you too, this is the city's two thousand and twenty pavement management program condition assessment. It's a lot, but this is basically the consultant crew that we had go through and perform an ASTM survey. On all city streets to evaluate their condition. And you know, just like a report card, they're graded one, zero through a hundred. Red is bad and blue is basically new. This map accounts for, in blue, accounts for streets that were supposed to be paved in that five years. And we know now that didn't happen, so the map's not exactly accurate. It shows streets that in blue that are really actually red because of the way that the consultant did the mapping. We're having that changed on this next round and we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes to more accurately describe it. So you can see that heat map of where the needs are, but if you were to cross-reference, oh, Commissioner Ferguson, yes. Absolutely, yeah, we have a very comprehensive pavement management program report, we can provide that to the commission, you can review that. Absolutely, yeah, in fact, it, we, we reviewed that document at our, in our meeting in early April last year. And I know that previously you haven't seen that, so we can provide that. The nice thing about that document is it shows you examples of how the pavement condition survey works. So if you have alligator cracking, like how do you determine how severe that alligator cracking is? If you have, you know, a concrete corner break, it shows you how severe that is, so it's a really helpful guide, we can provide that. Yeah, absolutely. So if you were to cross-reference this map against the street list that we are on projects one, two and four. You'll see that all those streets are red and that's how those streets were selected. Basically, the worst streets in the city were selected for improvement. Now, that's a pretty good strategy, but it doesn't really tell the whole picture. And so in picking the next set of streets and also taking a look at project three, we're taking a little bit different approach, we talked about this a little bit in September. So let me jump to the next slide. Thanks, Raina. Again, you've seen these two maps before, as we've talked in this commission about our water, thirty-year water master plan. And our sewer consent judgment. We developed maps that have infrastructure needs out of those efforts. And so now, as we're taking a look at project two and we're designing it, streets that were already selected. We're gonna be incorporating these needs, whether it's sewer replacements. Waterline upsizing or actually in red there, you can see fire flow needs. Meaning that those water lines don't meet adequate fire flow requirements and so we need to upsize the lines. And we're trying to take that on under project two. We weren't able to take that on under project one because of the way the previous process worked. But it makes economic sense for the city to try to tackle on all of these needs at once when they're replacing a street. Next slide. And so we touched on this real briefly in September. In looking at the project three list, which is our, our preventative maintenance streets that we wanna tackle each year. Our new strategy that we're proposing is to actually conduct this work in one, one area per year. If we have the funding for that entire area. And so our approach was, how do we divide the city up into these areas? You know. In theory, we want this to be an apolitical process based on data and factors. And so they know that areas do not follow the, the city's council districts. But rather they follow sort of intuitive sections of the city divided up by the major arterial streets in equal surface areas of pavement. So you could see on the right there, we've got our sort of our total surface area of actual roadway. And we divided this up and you can see the yellow lines kind of hug the city's major streets or major or minor arterials. And so the idea here is that the biggest complaints we hear and the, the biggest needs that we see in terms of street infrastructure. Are on residential streets that have been paid for many decades. Arterial streets need some attention as well, but really what we want our slurry program to do is enhance the quality of the residential street network. And so on our, our total area numbers over there, we're leaving out the yellow highlighted streets. So that they can be handled under, you know, much larger projects, so which you can typically get their own funding. And so that we can focus on the area approach. And so we've sort of superimposed the bid packages, one, two and four that we've been talking about as well as some recently completed projects. And recent can be, you know, up to ten years ago here in this city. But you know, that's the, that's the approach we're taking. So this, we left off in this area and talking in September, we wanna show you a little bit more here. Of the next slide. So now that we've established these areas where we think make, have a kind of a common sense in bringing one project into a neighborhood. And dividing up the city somewhat equally. The next evaluation is, okay, so how do we actually go about implementing the project and, you know. Initially, it'll be this project three. And it really just comes down to the, obviously the budget that we have to implement into a street program in any given year. So our idea here obviously is that, once the city gets over this initial hump of fixing streets that are so far gone that they can't be maintained, they have to be rebuilt. If we are able to maintain those streets regularly, each area of the city should in theory cost the same. Now, we won't get there overnight, we have some work to do before we get there. But if we're looking at a long-term plan, decades-long planning, then we want to set this up so that we start to use this area system. Even if it's some sort of hybrid approach in the beginning. And so our first, our next step here was actually looking at what are the needs, cost needs on each of these streets? And how does that aggregate up into the entire area? So the only data we had to begin with was our two thousand and twenty PMP, the plan where had that, that red and yellow and green and blue map that we showed earlier. And so that PMP only gave us cost estimates for five years, meaning that we don't have costs for all the streets. We only have costs, the consultant said, hey, these are the streets you should do in the next five years is what it's gonna cost. And so we had to estimate the rest of the costs for all the other streets based on the repair, our repair strategy, right? So where the consultant gives us one street that's red, they say, this is gonna be your most expensive street, you gotta rebuild this from the ground up. Another street that's maybe orange or yellow won't cost as much. And so you have the different cost values per square foot that you apply to each of the different streets. So in not having those cost estimates, we basically applied a factor based on what we, what we can assume about those streets. Now, I'm telling you what we had to go off of. We've just recently conducted and completed a new condition survey for the entire street network, we just finished it in two thousand and twenty-three. We'll be presenting those results to you as we get the report back from the consultant. But under this new iteration, we're taking a different approach in taking all the condition data and applying cost data across the entire city. So that we can actually refine this area-by-area approach. So I'm throwing a lot of stuff out there, I can just show you here on our next slide. So what this ultimately means. Oh, Raina, if you don't mind, jump into the next one. Thank you so much. So what this ultimately means is developing the next set of projects based on this cost scenario. So if we're to divide up the streets into these very various colored areas. And we know what the five-year plan cost is, so that's in the first column, we've got our area of the pavement in each of those sections of the city. And we have our five-year plan costs that the consultant gave us in two thousand and twenty dollars, of course. And that's basically, we talked about this a little bit September, the consultant's approach was, how much can the city afford to spend in a given year? And I'll give you a five-year plan based on what you can afford. So that, that's one approach, right? But ultimately, what we're trying to do is if, if we take that approach, it's never gonna be, it's never driven by the actual condition of the, of the city's streets. It's, it's more driven by what the city can afford to do and both of those things are important. So our approach now is to take a look at like, what are the entire infrastructure needs of the city? And what do we wanna tackle at what point in order to do this more cost-effectively? So in looking at the five-year plan cost in two thousand and twenty, if we were to make assumptions about doing just the least amount of surface treatment work across the rest of the city, we can come up with a two thousand and twenty dollars total cost. And that's the third column there. So. Let me, let me jump a little up ahead here and show you the fourth column, which is our slurry only cost. So this is our, this is our. This is our best-case scenario. Let's say years from now, the city has finally gotten some of its streets into shape and we're regularly maintaining them. What should happen is we should only be doing the minimum amount of maintenance work on these streets. So the target is to get to, to get from spending, you know, a large amount of money for total reconstruction efforts. To a smaller amount of money in each area for just doing maintenance work. So in two thousand and twenty, those costs were about four hundred thousand dollars. Now, jump ahead to two thousand and twenty-three, if we're to look at those, what those costs were for just slurry only, which is our, our basic maintenance of streets. We're looking at six hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that should be our new baseline, instead of going back and saying, what can the city afford? We should be saying, at a very minimum, just to do basic maintenance on all streets in each section, in each section every seven years. The city needs to invest at least six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of two thousand and twenty-three money. So, you know, in looking at the next few years and understanding that, that allows us to come up with a financial strategy. And that, that's obviously the next step. Along with the finance department and looking at five-year projections is to say, this is the minimum that needs to be invested and that just gets us minimum maintenance. That doesn't even get us streets that need to be repaired, that helps to build a financial model where we can, you know, go pursue bonding and things like that. What that also does is it lets us build our next few projects. Project three, if we say have, you know, a million dollars. We can pick an area where we have some component of regular maintenance that needs to be done. And some component of, of larger reconstruction efforts that need to be done and focus that in one area. And then do our water improvements and our sewer improvements, which are separately funded all at the same time. And it really is the most cost-effective strategy over a long period of time for the city. So I've got that last column there, two thousand and twenty-three total cost TBD. Because really, we know that the, the needs are much more than just regular maintenance of the streets. We have streets that are literally crumbling that need complete reconstruction. So as we're gathering, as we've gotten that data out of our two thousand and twenty-three condition survey. Our next step is to basically build in what those costs are. Where our slurry, slurry, slurry only costs in two thousand and twenty-three is about fifty-five cents per square foot. Reconstruction can be up to two, three, four dollars per square foot. So we need that information to incorporate into the model and basically build out our next project. So we have plenty of work to do in the meantime, we have to get project two, you know, designed and out there and working on project four. And the reason they're kind of in that order is because that's what we, you know, discussed with the council months back, we just don't wanna make it even more confusing than it is. But, and again, this only deals with non-artificial streets, we'll have to have a separate program for arterial streets, which we can get, you know, Caltrans money and metro money and federal DOT money to do those types of streets. So that's really where we are, the next steps, Raina, if you can jump to the next slide. You know, when we talked about this in September, all of these were next steps, but now we've gotten, we've waded our way through it quite a bit. And so, you know, we have the complete condition survey, we basically need to identify the priority areas based on the collective factors, we talked about those previously. And we're actually gonna consider the comments that you had in September, there was a comment about, you know, traffic volumes being a factor. You know, from a financial modeling perspective, there was a discussion about, you know, some sort of assessment fee that we talked about in September. And really bringing this before the, the commissions that are of concern, so today we're bringing this to the Public Works Commission. We'll be talking about it next week at the Transportation Commission, but in a little bit different light. Because they have a different perspective in terms of how this affects transportation goals. And so our next steps are, of course, looking at funding, developing that long-term budget with finance, once we have all of our numbers in order. And then bringing the plan to city council to talk about what are our next set of streets and why. So hopefully, that's a great overview for you, I'm happy to take any questions.
So talk to me about, I hear the forecasting, that's great. What are we spending as on an annual basis right now for street improvement? If you could just summarize what work we're doing and what's incorporated at the present time.
Sure. It's a little bit of a, a non-standardized thing, because there have been some years in the past where we haven't spent nearly any money. Now, in order to continue receiving money from the state every year, we are supposed to spend a minimum of one point four million dollars on streets. The state's program is set up in such a way that they give you two years to spend the money. So, you know, you have to spend one point four every year, but if it takes you, you know, you spend one point three in one year and then you get the extra hundred thousand in the next year, you're still okay. The problem that South Pasadena has had in years past is that it never catches up to that actual one point four. It'll spend some in one year, the remainder in the next year, but then they never actually get a whole one point four spent, well, actually two point eight in two years. And so we were basically heading into the situation where we were never gonna catch up. And so now we, for many reasons, we've had a lull these past couple of years. So we've actually had an opportunity had us to start over. So the strategically in our budget this past year, we scheduled, we committed about three point eight million dollars in the streets budget. From now until we have a new plan. So if, if we can spend that in one year, we will, it's unlikely because it's a lot of the money to spend on streets. But we're already past our one point four threshold for the year, this current street project that we're doing right now is about one point one million. And we expect project two to be, you know, a little bit more than that. As I showed you, project three, which is a slurry project, it could be in the hundreds of thousands, so we will spend that money. So to answer your question, you know, it, it's, it kind of ebbs and flows, but it should be over one point five. Now, another strategy that we're not really discussing here is one we're working on with finance, is convincing the state to reduce that number. Basically, you know, to get the five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars the state gives us, we shouldn't necessarily have to spend one point four million dollars a year. It's kind of a strange ratio. And so that's another strategy is still spend that amount of money, but only have to spend a smaller amount to get the same amount from the state. So that, that's another.
Thank you.
Of course.
I had a quick question regarding the, when, when these plans are coming up, do they include sidewalks or is it specifically just streets?
It depends on the street, so for example, Monterey right now, where there are sidewalk panel problems. We're replacing those sidewalk panels, same on Forest Avenue. So we'll inspect the sidewalks, if they're in good shape, we don't wanna throw, you know, good money away fixing a sidewalk that's in decent shape. We incorporate into the project. Now, there's some streets that don't have sidewalks, there's some streets where the sidewalks are in a certain type of condition. That it wouldn't be economically feasible to do it under the street project. A good example of this is when, in order to make the sidewalk legally compliant. You basically have to, you know, take the sidewalk in all sorts of different directions and, and the limits of your repairs are sort of very large. And it almost kind of makes sense to maybe come and have as a separate project. So it really depends, so we try to complete an entire street and fix it. But I'll tell you, on Monterey, especially on the south side, as the hillside sort of slopes into Monterey. There are some sidewalk ramps that would be very difficult to replace and fix. And so we may limit the project from fixing those so that we can focus the budget on the things that we can address. And have to address those underneath a different project. But as much as we can, we try to tack in all of that work.
Okay, and then you had mentioned the street, like street damage restoration fee from our comments in September. Did you have any feedback on how that is progressing as far as we could from before?
So we have had a conversation with our finance department about it, there's a couple of different strategies that they're looking at. There's, you know, improvement districts, there's assessments, there's developer impact fees. The cities, you know, as the city's going through this financial projection exercise. And taking a look at the fees that it collects across the board, not just for, you know, this, but all of our, our entire fee schedule. We're trying to sort of come up with an overall strategy about, you know, paying the bills with these different fees. So it is a conversation. So it is a conversation that's ongoing. It's not going to be on its own. It's going to be kind of grouped with a lot of different concepts in terms of bringing revenue into the city. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, then, moving on to our action items.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of September 13, 2023?
I'd come to review those, I believe. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Perfect. And we're going to do a quick real call vote. Vice Chair Jones. Commissioner Ferguson abstain. Commissioner Mally. Thank you. I believe the motion can still pass with unanimous vote. Two to zero and one abstain. Do we have a motion for item number four, for approval of the minutes of November 8?
Same. Happy to make the motion there. The motion to approve item, yeah, I'll make the motion for that one.
Okay. Anybody else want a second thought? Okay. And a quick voice roll call vote. Vice Chair Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson. And Commissioner Mally.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, two to zero with one abstain.
Great. Thank you. And that concludes our action items. So we move on to communications, beginning with City Council meetings on.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner, communications. Would they like to begin?
I'll be on mic. Um, I just wanted to congratulate our, our new mayor as of December 20th. You know, I'm sure I speak for everyone here. Say congratulations on your new position.
Thank you. This comes with big response. Another job.
She can handle it. And we had a great time at the, the tree lighting. Thank you for that event. I don't know whose idea it was to put the snowballs out for the children, but I know that my daughter had a great time throwing snowballs at the mayor while he was giving his speech. So we look forward to throwing snowballs at you. It's going to be great fun. And staff communications?
I just have two quick items. At first, I just want to highlight that we have our new principal engineer, Michael Vartanians, joining us. He started on Monday. So he is going to be overseeing our engineering division, which includes capital improvement projects, land development, and all other engineering-related aspects of the city. So we're really excited to have him on board. The other item is, I'll just mention. So tonight's commission took place before our commission appointments for the new year. And so that's why you don't see our full commission tonight. The commission appointments will be happening very soon at council. The other thing we were supposed to do, the first meeting of the year, was elect a new chair. But we've felt it's most appropriate to wait until the, the commission's at its full capacity and then elect a chair at our next meeting. So we'll be doing that in March. So that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Right. Thank you very much, everyone. I think that concludes our meeting. Do I have to say anything special to adjourn it? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned at 7:14 PM. Thank you.